Thank you and just want to pray in your name, Jesus, amen.
Good.
All right. So I had a chance to look at the agenda. Everybody find the agenda we need a question on second about the agenda.
I believe we accept the agenda for work session. All right. Dr. Leece? You have the minutes from the previous month. We want to take a minute to read over those. Please, if the board will place these minutes on the consenting panel for approval. The reg room.
Motion.
Well, we don't have to. Yeah, that's all right. All right. Satilla Regional Library art perception and we have Mr. Rodney McLean, McKeedlin?
Rodney McKelvin.
McKelvin from the library if you want. Address the board and share with us what you have.
So we're going to start something new. We're going to have an art in the library program coming up. We're doing this spring install. This is our art project draft. So I wanted to bring over a formal invitation and I've got some flyers. It's okay though.
Yes, sir.
To present to you guys.
Like, sir.
And it has all the relevant information. Doctor, sorry Pastor Harvey Williams is going to be our artist. He takes the image of the photography. And so on Saturday, October 12th from four to six in Douglas Branch, we're going to have the art section, our library refreshment. So if you want to stop over, check out all the photography. And then by then Monday, what I'm going to do is start distributing the art throughout all of our branches. And also just to let you know, I just went last week to a director's meeting in Augusta, all of the public library directors and I got from GTS a escape room kit. And so I'm working on putting together so hopefully by next week I'll be able to push out on social media, we're going to have an escape room. So that'll be fun. So trying to find some things to get people to come into the library. Yes, sir. I'm going to make you all aware of all of that.
Fantastic. We really appreciate what you do and partnering with us and these events and we have the invitation here, we'll certainly share it with everybody and hopefully we'll have some representation there.
And at some point I would like to get in touch with you, Dr. Leece, and set up a meeting, maybe we could talk.
Yes, sir.
And try and find some ways that the library can partner with the school system.
All right.
And we have a grant disposal coming through, so I'd like to also have conversation with you about that as well and to see if we can try and work together.
Well, that sounds exciting. We'll give with Robin and look at my calendar and I can, I can contact you or tomorrow and we'll set up a meet to get together.
I'm a little too old, but probably next week we could be part of this.
Great, great. Well, it sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have our architect, Mr. Keith Barrett, a design architect with A and B Architects and he has been working on our plans for renovations of Coffee High School. So Keith, if you want to, you're the big show tonight, so if you want to take the podium and let's talk about the renovations at Coffee High.
All right. How about we just start over with this and what we're going to be doing and get started.
That sounds good.
Of course, the first thing on our list is we're going to paint all the interior of the school. We're going to replace all the ceiling tiles and the grid and we're putting in new light fixtures and we've got the same light fixtures at Nichols Elementary School is what we're using at the high school. So if you've been out there, you'll see kind of what we're doing. Then we are going to get all the back rooms, put new flooring fixtures in there, cover up the existing tile floors and put a seamless epoxy wall. I think you'll have that at Nichols too, don't you? Did you not put, no, you don't have that in your school gym? Well, that's typically what we're doing all of our schools. That eliminates sprouts, so then you don't have problems with urine stains and stuff getting in there and you fight that all the time. So it's, it's real quite easy to clean and it'll give everything a brand new look in the bathrooms. And we're also replacing all the existing toilet partition doors with a solid phenolic door. So that's a little bit a good durable product to put in there. And if you want to look right quick, I, Dr. Noel's got that in there. We have six, five contractors with current drawings right now. I don't know who the contractor from Savannah is or the United Graham's Maintenance Services, but I'll call them and find out all that more information about Barbara Contracting. You probably are not familiar with, but their school system, a contractor that does a lot of school renovation work. We've probably worked on ten or twelve different school projects over the past ten years with them. And they've done a lot of work for Tid County Schools up there with their school system doing interior renovations at schools going on. And so, and of course, you know, an architecture company, they've done a lot of work here too. I'll do some research on it, pick one from out of town. Back to our list of things that we have, we're going to be putting the audio enhancement system in that's at Nichols in all the classrooms, which is a speaker system with a microphone and the security stuff that they have. Dr. Noel will be having the exact, the system put in under his side. We're putting all the infrastructure in and working in conjunction as we were through the high school and getting that put together.
Which includes a camera in every classroom. That's the big piece of that. So every, every classroom will have a camera, a three sixty camera that can record in the classrooms.
And then speaking of cameras, we're also adding about a hundred and fifty cameras throughout the school system and to the current system that y'all currently have. We're putting in, at the front door, we did the security package and a couple of corridor doors that we did in this last phase that are on electric lock system so that the doors can be unlocked on a time system or as you come through with a car swipe. The rest of the corridor in wings, we'll be putting those in in this phase. The doorways that aren't on the end of a corridor that open off of your exterior space that just go out to exterior areas, all your locker room doors that go directly to the outside will have those doors with a door position and a lock sensor that you won't remotely be able to unlock those doors. It'll just let you know if that door is not closed and if it's not locked. So it'll enhance the security, but you don't want to encourage people going in and out of those spaces since you can't see what's going on. But if it's on the end of a corridor where students go out and travel back and forth to wings and stuff, then those doors can be programmed to unlock on those particular times that you need that to happen. We're also replacing all of the middle doors because they're kind of worn out and we're putting in the new security glass that we used at the front. So it's laminated and give you extra security there. Another thing that we have on our list is a new fire alarm system. The lighting control system is kind of antiquated, this operated in an office space, so we'll be replacing all of that with something that's new and we operate on your computer system. The lights in the existing stage area that you have now, we're going to simplify that. There's a lot of theatrical lights that people really have a hard time making work. So we're taking those out and putting something simple in so there's two or three buttons. So if you've got a speaker, you'll have a spotlight to turn that on or if you want to do something else, you can set that stage so you don't have to fiddle through a huge lighting board to figure out what's going on. And we're replacing the two big speakers that are in there for more, less production, but more for a presentation in that space since you're going to have your big theater for that type of stuff to go on. The, we're also going to spruce up the wood trim and paint the floor and there's kind of, needs a little sprucing up as well. Let's see. And the offices, the media center and the lunchroom, we're replacing the existing carpet and then, and the corridors and the office spaces, we're going with a new vinyl flooring. It looks kind of like wood to warm things up a little bit. And, and then in the gym, we're going to replace the wood floor. We have a little bit of termite issue in there, this deteriorated floor. So we're also have our lamps in there with your local termite company to come in and treat everything while the whole wood floor is out. They can get to the cracks and stuff underneath the slide and treat that. And then when the new floor goes in, hopefully that'll give us ahead of the problem I've been fighting for years. Also in the process of putting the new wood floor in, the wood flooring company will have to relocate the bleachers. They'll have to pull those out because your wood floor goes underneath the bleachers. So that is a little tricky, but they do it. So it's a couple of time consuming. And that work will be done over the summer. Also in the gym, we're going to be putting wood lockers for the basketball players and the varsity girls in voice pop ring, dress that up, people over collegiate field. And then also the rubber floor in the small living room behind the main gym there needs an upgrade, so we'll be working on that as well. Let's see. We are going to come up with a new letter system for the wings out there. There seems to be some confusion about how that works. And I have an idea, I need to go over to Dr. Cummings to see if he likes what I've come up with. Those are things we can change at any time. Let's see. On the fire door that separates the main concourse from the assembly space back to the rest of the wings, there's been some complaints about how quickly they can get that door retracted after the fire alarm system's tested. So we're replacing that. The door doesn't have anything wrong with it, but there's some new motors we can put in and instead of having a bunch of switches that it operates, they have new electronic sensors. So hopefully that'll solve the issue that we're having there.
What's yours?
No, there's a sliding door with the gang tool it is, we have to go up to wing B, it retracts back into the wall here and then separates the rest of the building. The front half of the assembly space is a sprinkled building that you have a, have a three hour separation from this part of the building to the other. And it stays retracted in the wall until the fire alarm system goes off and then it slowly comes across and closes that up.
It's a huge curtain.
It's a huge curtain.
Similar to that back there.
It's it's made out of metal and all this other stuff, so it has a three hour fire rate. But you know, it's thirty years old and the technology hasn't improved and we've talked with one door and say, they know what we're going to do to it. So we've got that specified to fix in the current set of drawings. Let's see, we talked about the bathrooms. The other thing we need to just be aware of, there's two hundred and eighty seven thousand square feet, so this is not a summer job. This is going to be something that we're going to have to work on a few classrooms at the time this school's going on. The contractors will work in the gym floor, the large common spaces and things over the summer and get those areas taken care of. But originally, I think y'all might have seen a letter that we got Dr. Leece to sign and we're thinking that we might have everything finished by the end of the summer. It's after talking to some suppliers about getting the air conditioning units and the light fixtures, we can't get those till probably February even if we did it now, just because they have to be manufactured. So that wouldn't get started till after the first of the year, so that's not going to give us enough time to get those types of things done. Another issue that we talked about was y'all were going to Academy Concept in the next, it's a year or two.
Big issue to mention.
Next year. So on each one of these main four wings, we're going to take an existing classroom and subdivide into a receptionist area and an office. So you'll have, is it the?
The academy council is an administrator on each wing.
It will be.
That's our tip.
So each corridor, you have the doors that separate the wing from the building. We added a doorway into that classroom, so if you're in the main corridor, you come through the receptionist area and then you can go back to the rest of the wing. So that gives each academy its own identity that they're working towards. And that was something we were able to work in without costing a whole lot of money. It's just a matter of putting a sheet rock partition in there and then adding some air conditioning deckwork from a barge unit that we'll be replacing on the outside. We're going to clean the cast stone on the outside of the entrance way on the building. There's a couple of hollow metal frames in the media center, a serving line in the kitchen and then a wood trim out to the little back patio there that are rested, so we'll be taking out part of those frames and putting new ones in and sprucing that back up. And I think that's pretty much everything that was on our list.
Gymnasium, if you paint job, the black ceiling and.
We were talking about painting everything white in there.
Make it brighter. Brighter in there.
Of course, we'll be putting new LED lights in there and it will definitely feel a lot brighter as well. Now I had one request from a contractor who's not going to be in town on the October the twenty second, which is when we originally had scheduled the bid. And they get requested if we can move it back. So I don't know if y'all have a problem with that, since we're not going to be finished by the end of the summer, we can get more competition on our prices. I would recommend that we move it back a week if that's okay. The DOE guidelines is we have to revise it for twenty eight days, so if we move it back a week, that just gives us more time, so then we'll have a problem with this.
I was referring to Keith, he does this, said if he felt like that was the best thing for us to do, I don't have a problem with it.
We can get requests all the time and I told him, well, we're trying to set it before y'all's next quarter, you can say you have all the numbers in front of you, but I think this particular contractor will give you a really good price and he has lots of experience in doing that, so.
This would put us back, instead of approving the bid at the October board meeting, we'll approve it at the November board meeting.
And that'll also give us a little more time to look at stuff instead of two days.
That number meetings early anyway. Yeah, exactly. So you're talking three weeks. And we'll just start school labor day.
But just remember, there's a lot of, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a big place out there.
Yeah. Well, going in this, the goal was to make it look as new as possible, like a new school inside, so that's.
Well, you got, it's only twenty-five years old and it's bad to love them.
Yeah, twenty-five years, this is, there'll be another group doing this renovation the next time.
They creep out down there.
I'll be wheeling in. So we'll make sure their frames.
Well, you're really successful now, I think. So just come in the front door.
We just need an elevator in that stadium.
Do you have any questions I can answer?
Well, and that was the point of, this was, is that everything good? The point of this, I wanted to make sure we shared everything with y'all so that we could, when we bring the bid back and ask you to approve a huge number, hopefully not a huge number, but relatively speaking, it'd be a very large number, y'all would have a little understanding of what we.
Oh, I will mention another thing I forgot, since I'm not in the campus year, I start to think about all these things. We're replacing all the barges on the rest of the classrooms and right now there's four or five exterior outside air units that come in to make up the fresh air. So we're simplifying the maintenance by just making the barge unit handle the fresh air itself. So nobody will have to get access on the roof and deal with all those old equipment things up there. And then of course it'll be on the exhaust systems, put in all the bathrooms and stuff. Those are kind of intermingled with the old fresh air system, so I think it'll be easier to take care of it and give you a lot better performance than other things.
I think it's relevant too that everybody knows that, Dr. Cummings, you've been involved in many discussions about this whole plan. And Chan from a technology standpoint has been very involved, Michael, Tracy, and then some of your folks out at the high school will be involved in these meetings and it's a.
Yes, sir.
We think it's going to make a better school, so.
Well, we appreciate your attention and thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
All righty.
I've got a question before we move on for Chan, talking about just talking about these cameras we're going to put in there, you know, we looked at those, some meetings a couple of years ago, I really liked them, thought that's the way we need to go, but obviously Nichols, of course, some of them brought them, but they don't have all the capabilities of Nichols has. But we put them in Nichols and one of the things we heard when we first looked at these cameras was sometimes the teacher was a little bit skeptical of, you know, that kind of technology in a classroom to start with, but after they started using them, they loved them. And I'm just curious if you've had any feedback from, from Nichols yet as far as, you know, how they like them?
The teachers that I've spoken with like them, they are not running continuously. They're basically designed, the teacher's got a button on their plane that they can turn it on if there's something they need to record. Primarily what it'd be used for is best practices for instruction. The teacher wants to record a lesson, a model app for other teachers or if there's a student that's out of city, hostile homebound, something like that, they can record their lessons and share those so the student can access it. We've seen a lot of instructional use of it. Of course.
Well, and that was, that was another part of the equation with cameras, they were used for, I mean, not just security or, you know, instruction for a lot of different things. And I just, I know when they first started talking about them, they were like, you know, they had some teachers that were a little skeptical and I was like, I don't understand why they would not want them, but I'm just curious if we've had any feedback from Nichols on those.
I've not heard anything back on.
Yeah, I know, I know early on when we talked about it, that collaboration piece and, and the modeling, that, that it was being used for more than just security, that the other campuses that were, that, to share that information.
Every teacher of the year has to submit a model lesson to be evaluated and that, in those cases where those cameras are there, that's why they use, pretty good quality.
Feedback I've received from Lori has been very positive. She, she has a microphone, she shared with me the last time I was out there, that she has a microphone and she can go in any classroom with her mic in the building, so she has her lander on, so when she goes in a classroom, her voice is projected into the room also. And she said, that's really neat that when she goes in, she's on the, on the system. And the videos have been very, very positive.
I'm excited about it. I think it's a great system. I look forward to getting it out there.
It will transform Coffee High School, I think. The security camera piece, Chan's spent a lot of time.
Right.
Figuring where the cameras need to go.
Existing cameras are analog on the co-op cables. These will be on our network, it'll be IP based cameras, so I told the administration out there, we're really starting to scratch. We're not replacing camera A, another camera A, this whole new ballgame, just totally different camera place, off of Mr. Allen out there quite a bit, where trouble spots are, where there's some blind spots with the current cameras, we're going to try to eliminate all those as much as possible.
Exterior cameras as well.
A lot more exterior.
You say, so these cameras will be able to be viewed for the children that are talking about.
If the teacher chooses to record it, the teacher can record lessons, segments of lessons and save those out so students can access it. Just for, you know, for homework help, reinforce it, they want to go back and watch that again while they're doing their homework, remediation, it's got a lot, a lot of potential uses.
Take a log in their school account, close it up and watch the lessons, whatever, I sleep that day. Or if they just need, as some of them said, they'll leave and take and video all of them if somebody just needs extra help, you go back and listen to the lesson again, you know, you can pull that up and do that.
The original integration, says cumbersome, but there were several steps involved in getting that downloaded and shared with students for the latest release of the audio enhancement software, saved it straight to Google Drive, which all the students have access. So teacher would just want to look and share it with a group of students, a whole class or an individual student.
So that won't be a problem with, like, per se, they saying the cameras on the bus, like, you can't view them because of other children on there, so this won't be a problem with the students and parents or whatever viewing this while other children are in the classroom for that.
Sure, that's an issue we'll have to address with counseling right now. I have not heard any concerns in place about it.
I think, I think this was the issue with mainly because of discipline versus, versus a classroom.
Sure. If you, if it's a teacher filming instruction and informing her or him at the board or something, that there will be a limited amount of children that would be viewed anyway. So, you know, it's not, it's not like it's going to be filmed in the, you know, the audience. And so I don't, haven't seen it count, but I would surmise, and if you're filming the instruction that's going on in front of the room, it could be a limited number of students. It might be, so maybe no students would be viewed at all. And the thing I feel about cameras, we already got cameras in the room, we got cameras in every single room already. And so we just trying to catch up.
If you've got a camera that's filming a lesson for the students and the students have access to it, I don't think there's a problem. If there's a fight that broke out in the classroom, most likely you wouldn't put that on there.
Well, in some cases it might not be bad, but, but, you know, you just got, like, we have, we're sure, surely have to work out some of the kinks and some of the, so there's be new technology in the classroom and we have to utilize it to its best and as well as potential. And it's, it's not a gotcha thing, it's a thing to enhance instruction and provide, like I said, the students are not there, they missed various reasons, having access to a, to the lesson is invaluable, you know, and for the extra help and for the missed lessons.
The classroom cameras are three hundred and sixty degree, it's like a fishbowl type camera, you're looking from the ceiling down, you're seeing a distorted view of the whole classroom. When that teacher finishes that video, he or she can say, I'll just want to show the front view, it can digitally correct that image and adjust its perspective, so you're just seeing the front of the room for the back of the room or for one particular area. So it can be tweaked afterwards through the show, which we're really going to show.
Just a little question. I know we've got a timeline here, can you provide the board with a per project timeline as it goes through or can we get something like that, I know, you know, we get hit up as to when are, you know, when are things going to be happening, you know, that we'll, we'll have a reference that we can say, well, it's projected to start.
I try. So we'll get with Keith and once the project's lit, I guess, and the contractor's secured and make sure they give us a.
I know it's not a hard date, but it gives us a perspective if someone says, when's the, when do you expect the gym to be finished?
Some look back and laugh at that.
Sure, sure.
Basically, they're going to be taking four or six classrooms and doing all of the work in those classrooms and then they'll relocate kids and so it's probably going to be slower than normal operation. It's going to be a lot of logistics.
That's what I mean, I think that might help us if we get asked, you know, we'll, this is, we understand the process, this is what's going on, this is how it's happening. And so, you know, it's a, not a race to.
We will get that.
Yeah, we're not trying to get it built before, you know, we're trying to do it right for the next generation of kids we're going to do and staff.
Coffee High School renovations.
The last question, I know we've probably talked about this and talked about this, but just remind everybody, we, we are earning, we're accruing any money toward this from the state?
We will be reimbursed around one point two million dollars from the state on this project, so we will get some reimbursement for this project.
And the rest of the.
And we submitted that application in sixteen, so we need to get this work done. We have sent a letter to the Department of Education and they've given us approval to phase this. If you remember, last year was phase one with HVAC at Coffee High School, half of the HVAC, and this is the second phase, which will complete the rest of the HVAC and the other renovations that we want to do. And because Coffee High School is over twenty years old, it's twenty-five years old now, we qualify for this state entitlement funding, reimbursement from the state for this project. So yes, we will get one point two million dollars. But it is a reimbursement program, it's not that they just send us the money. We, we send them the completed work that we've done and then they'll reimburse us for it.
There's a couple of different projects we talked about, it's all come together, like the gym stuff and all that and something separate originally, the HVAC stuff, it's just all get done one time. The camera systems on that, something we kind of decided to add, we do renovations and stuff, we want to try to do, so that's kind of been added on top of it, so it's drawn, but I mean, that, like I said, the facility's twenty, twenty-five years old. I mean, you know, you got one shot, you want to fix it, get it all right. It is what it is, you know.
If you recall in the, the ballot for the East Fox Five, we put in on the ballot was security upgrades and camera systems, so that was certainly part of the referendum. So that was certainly part of the referendum. Okay, it's exciting stuff. Financial report. We have the financials completed for FY '19. The books are closed. We've signed off with the state. So FY '19 is complete. And Ms. Young has those reports available. We'll go through those tonight. Ms. Young?
This is our final report as of June 30, 2019. We closed about two weeks ago and submitted everything to the state. So you can see on here, we began the fiscal year FY '19 with the $12,409,352.95. And after all our revenues were posted in our expenditures, it's got our final accounts receivables accrued from our salaries and benefits. And our accounts payable accruals from those salaries and benefits. We're left with a ending fund equity of $14,950,260.85.
All right, next one. So that was the final FY '19. That was.
That's where we closed the year with our fund equity for June 30. So we'll begin July one with this amount, $14,950,260.85. This is our comparison report as compared to previous years. As compared to '18, we're up about 2.5. It's a little lower. It's less than the previous two years where we're up about $3 million. So this year we're about, it's about 2.5 in comparison to FY '18. This report has our details. So you can see with our revenues, we ended the fiscal year So we're over budgeted about 1.3 million there. And then with our expenditures, they totaled $65,356,478. So we're under approximately 1.8 there. And then that left us with our fund equity for the end of this little year. With the $14,950,260.85.
Any questions?
Good job coming in on the budget. I mean, another revenue is strong.
Yeah, we're blessed locally. They are local economy continues to, to grow.
And we are, I guess there's a certain amount that we need to have on hand or recommending we have on hand. We're pretty much in that realm now.
Yes, we are.
Where we need to be.
I think we are.
Yeah. So we're much better than we were.
Much better. I can remember, you know, we talked about that one time, you put it out there. I was thinking, we can't even pay out a month if something happened, you know. But so we're, we're, I guess you would call it healthy.
A good rule of thumb is in three months, operating expenses would be good to have.
November 2010, we had $290,000.
Yeah.
So.
It sounds much better than it was. So.
Good job, everybody. Appreciate it.
What is that, just, just, I know, like I said, I know we talked about this a bit during retreat season and budget season, but what's, what is that percentage, rough percentage we like to keep relative to?
It's a 15%.
About 15% relative to budget.
And one thing to keep in mind too, though, is equalization. We had a good year with equalization this past year. And we're having another good year with equalization. But keep in mind, equalization, we get about, I think we're getting nine, around $9 million in equalization this year. And that is funding based on the fact that we are a low wealth district. So they take 50, they take all 180 school systems and they rank order them by poverty, by wealth. And then they go to the halfway point and they cut it in half. So there's, half the school systems will be eligible for equalization funding. Then they scale them based on the level of poverty that you have in your community and your tax digest. That's how they pull those numbers. They have this very convoluted formula that they use to, to arrive at how much equalization each school system earns. And we've, we've really benefited from the formula. But about five years ago, they changed the formula and it hurt a lot of school systems. So that formula can be changed at any time. Each legislative session, if they decided to tweak the equalization funding, they could. So while we're doing, you know, well with the equalization right now, that's subject to change, especially with our local economy improving. And if we moved up on that poverty scale, we could see a, take a big hit in equalization. So. And also the charter system funding. I, I remind our schools when I go around, I've just finished all the faculty meetings with the schools and tell, walk through how they're going to be paid this year. And the charter system funding, that, that's almost a meal and taxes for us. Basically, it's about what it amounts to. And so we've been able to do the police, you know, the added security. We've been able to do the 23rd step for all those employees with the 23rd step. Some of those things, I don't know that we could have done if we hadn't had that additional charter system funding. So anyways, we could go a lot more, go on all that. Are there any questions? Do you have any questions?
Just glad we're at.
All right. So if it pleases the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda, the financials for approval.
Sploesd.
Sploesd. Did we talk about?
September. It's under, it's on that separate, yeah, it's under August, September's Sploesd.
Yeah, let's look at that.
Yeah, it's there, I see.
Yeah, it is. It's up about.
Yes, this is up about $30,000 from the previous year as well.
Yeah, the Sploesd earnings are up. A good bit. So that's a good thing. And the Performing Arts Center is moving along. It's dried in and they're running HVAC inside of it. And they're working on the sheet rock. There's a lot of sheet rock on the interior that they're currently working on. Is that a correct description where we're at, Michael, with that?
They were starting beginning to set some funding features last week.
We were hoping for an early February, hoping we even have a meeting scheduled there, training that charter system training that we do each year. We've got that scheduled for there, but I'm afraid we're going to have to, we've got the middle school auditorium reserved for that night. So we're going to give it another week or two and see where they're at and we'll probably have to move that training. But hopefully by early December, we'll be able to start using it, at least open. Any questions about Sploesd? If there's no questions about Sploesd, we will move on to out of state travel. Yeah, yeah, go to July one.
This is the final report for July. As you can see, we started the year with the $14,950,260.85. And we still are showing our accruals for the August. It's reported on here. And at the end of the month, we closed July with $14,912,368.78. And this is our comparison. So compared to FY '19, we're up approximately 2.8 and that's in line with the previous years there pretty well. And then the detail report here. Keep in mind that, you know, our 10-month employees are still paid. They'll be paid out of the previous fiscal year, July and August. So that's on reflection of their expenditures here. So we have ended the month of July with the $14,912,368.78. Okay, and this is as of August 31, 2019. Our accruals have been, you know, paid out, receivables closed out. We still have the 10-month figure on reflected here. So we ended August with $14,280,646.56. And the comparison as compared to the previous year, we're up about 3 for the month of August, $3 million. That kind of follows suit with the other two years as well. And our detailed report here.
Can you scroll back up to that TAT?
August will be the first month we report that.
Was it?
Black.
No, it's done this. Last year we averaged 116 a month. Dr. Lee's forgets what, we remember that it came out of the East Plus.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
He likes to forgive.
No, it's been a great, a great move. That's one.
Well, I just think, I think it shows how strong the East Plus, I mean, I, you know, the, I want to say to just the local, you know, folks shop up. They spend money local, buy cars local, they, you know.
When they moved that from East Plus to operating, that was a great, great move for school systems.
Okay, so you can see the final fund equity for the end of August is $14,280,646.56.
Is that it? All right. If it pleases the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Out of state travel, we have a number of trips and you'll note that many of them will be no expense to the system. They're being paid for from various groups that are willing. But you see the NROTC has a number of competitions that they're going to. And you may wonder why the NROTC has to go to Florida so much, where they're a naval ROTC. And most of their competitions are in Florida where we have naval facilities. So they have to go out of state. And of course, the band has a competition, band concert. There's a science group going to the Jacksonville Zoo. See the jazz band go to a competition in Orlando. CMS Art Club go to Jacksonville. AP Economics class will be going to New York. Texas, so that's all right. AP Economics, Federal Reserve, Business and History. Oh, Airport of Texas. They're not doing their Stock Exchange trip this year. I guess.
I think they were. I guess they go in Texas, see how they do it down there. Normally they would go to the Stock Exchange on Wall Street.
Yeah, that's where they typically go. And then the, this Lord, the Fine Arts Group, yeah, they're going to a performance in Jacksonville, see a play. Any questions about out of state travel?
The band thing in Troy, Alabama, they're going to be going for 12 days. Is that a typo?
That must be a typo, certainly. That's got to be a typo.
That's two weeks right there.
Can you make it look?
Yeah, I can, can get a look and get that information. All right. We'll get clarification on that and come back to it. Otherwise, we're gone. We're replacing this on the consent agenda. Graduation rate. We have our high school principals here tonight. We have Dr. Roland Cummins from Coffee High School and Ms. Pam Smith from Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy. So we wanted to present to the board tonight, the graduation rate for the Coffee County school system. And wanted to give our principals a chance to, to talk through their graduation rate and shine a little bit. We appreciate y'all being here. If you want to come up one at a time, maybe, and if you want to start us off, I think on the presentation. First off, we have Dr. Cummins in the high school and we've looked at it from a district perspective. So this is district perspective of graduation rate at 84.16. And Dr. Cummins, if you want to take it away and just talk us through what we have here.
Sure. You know, I just want, want to remind everyone.
Sure, you know, I just want to remind everyone, graduation rate is calculated by the state. So we, this is not anybody manipulating numbers at our level. So the state calculates graduation level based on the data. And they, you know, they inform us based on the cohort rate that they measure all schools by the state of Georgia. So we rank comparatively to all other states that, you know, evaluated and assessed the same way. But this is a system graduation rate of eighty-four point four, getting close to eighty-five. And then you see the five-year graduation rate at forty-two, eighty-four, forty-nine, and one. What's interesting to me about graduation rates, when you're dealing with high school, we're a high school, we're a public high school. And we take everybody that comes to us, everybody lives in our areas, and maybe some that don't. And obviously, when you're graduating, getting close to ninety percent graduation rate, that's a good job by the students. But contrast, that's by most colleges. Most colleges are taking the back, best and brightest, some of them in the nation, and that graduation rate is not nearly as high. I never understood, you know, that dynamic of how high schools are measured in one way. Colleges, some of our best universities in the country are not measured in like manner. But this is a testament to the job, first of all, the students are doing, the teachers, and also the support personnel we give, the support we give from the central office. You know, and this, when you see this number, that's, to me, this represents every teacher the student ever had, starting kindergarten, starting with the parents. Because everybody plays a part in graduation rate, it's just not the high school teachers. We just happen to be at the end of the educational chain, and so much focus and emphasis, obviously, is placed right at the end. But everybody that ever came in contact with that child, like I said, starting with the parents, plays a huge role in our graduation rate. And obviously, the higher our graduation rate is, the more quality product we produce, it's gonna be better for our overall economy here in Coffey County. It's gonna attract people to the area. Yes, sir.
And you mentioned this is a state report, Dr. Cummins. Do you want to walk them through what those flags mean?
Well, first of all, it's got all students, and the green flag, it's got a legend there. Let me go back on that page. Yeah, so, yeah, help me out, Dr. Newell, talks about the subgroup, and the green, green's usually good, so I'm gonna check that.
Yeah.
So I can take out the glasses and really do it, okay?
All students are eighty-four point one six?
And that's the target, the target is set by the state also. That's not a Coffey, that's not a Coffey County student system, the targets are set by the state. So we accomplished that, that goal. And then Native American, Alaska Native, you know, too few to measure, our Asian population, seventy-one is too few to measure. African-American students, you know, you can see that we're above the state target. Our Hispanic student, in terms of system graduation rate, is above the state target. Multiracial is, they said, the rate is too few, but the target, but the target is eighty-eight point eight, eighty-two point eight. Our white population is just a tad bit below our target. You know, we're eighty-three points two six, and our target is eighty-four point four seven. Our economically disadvantaged students, our American students are free of reduced lunch, that's where they get that data. We're not where we need to be there, and our English language learners, we've got some work to do there. And, but I'm proud to see our students with disabilities have shown a significant increase in terms of being a seventy-five percent. The target was sixty point seven five, so that's a tremendous job by all our teachers and support personnel that works with our special needs students. So that's a tremendous gain in that area, I know they're very, very proud of it, because we're very, very proud of their hard work. Now Coffey High School, going back to a four-year, the four-year rate, our graduation rate, going back to twenty-fourteen, was at eighty-one. And now, as you can see, kind of like the star market, a little bit up and down. And you can see where we are today in twenty-nineteen, the latest one, we're actually in twenty-eighteen, we're eighty-one point one one. So that's a significant improvement since twenty-fourteen. One of the things I always like to remind people, when you look at these numbers, remember, there's students behind each one of these numbers. Each one of these numbers represents students who are being successful. And who are having an opportunity, once they leave high school, to go into the next phase of their life, rather than college career life, just like our mission statement. And so let's never forget that there's numbers behind each one of these, there's students behind each one of these numbers. Now, this is Coffey High in particular, we experienced a slight gain in our graduation rate. We're almost at eighty-seven, eighty-eight, excuse me, eighty-nine, eighty-eight point six. And so we're, then you say, how did the district and state perform? So the district was at eighty-four point four, which we talked about already. And how did the high school perform on the four and five-year graduation rate? So it was an increase over last, over last year. And the good thing about the five-year grad rate, which I'm always proud of, students who stick with it and finish. You know, I think that shows a lot of perseverance, students that don't maybe finish what somebody else says they should. So it might take a student a little bit longer. And again, I go to college, how many students graduate college in four years? Not that many. Not as many as you would think. So again, if a student takes a little bit longer to graduate, so did, long as they finish. The goal is to finish. Nobody's gonna worry about that once they get their diploma and move on with their lives. And so we still got the flags, flags there, all students who are a little bit below our target there. If my eyes don't deceive me, and again, Asian, American, American Indians, too few, Asians, too few. But our African-American students were above our target, our Hispanic students were above our target. With our white students, we missed the target a little bit, and it's the same with the economically disadvantaged and English language learners. And again, it shows a significant improvement with our students with disabilities. Because that was an area for a long time that we lagged behind in, and there's been a lot of progress in that area. And a lot of hard work by a lot of teachers, a lot of support staff, you know, a lot with their parents. And students especially did a tremendous job this past year to experience that significant gain. Because you don't usually experience gains like that in a year. So obviously, we want to continue to replicate those best practices and instructions and encourage those students to do the best they can.
Dr. Cummins, I want to commend you for the achievement you had at Coffey High School this past year with graduation rate. As you mentioned, that's our mission and vision, destination graduation, coffee career and life. And our core business is teaching and learning, that's what we're here for, and to prepare students for next level. But I do want to commend you for, two weekends ago, you had a graduation ceremony out of Coffey High School on a Saturday morning at nine AM. And I was in attendance, and it was beautifully done, a great ceremony for that young person. But I want to commend you on having a graduation, so you had a summer graduate. Had one summer graduate, and his staff put on a graduation ceremony for that one student. And it was, it was well done, beautifully done, and was really special. It was, thank you.
Well, I appreciate the Board members and all they do to assist us, support us in what we do. Because it all starts with leadership. And I just really, really believe that, again, it takes everybody, from the parents to preschool, K three, K all the way up to where we are, you know, as seniors in high school. And we're all working together, we can, we can make, you know, students in Coffey County producing great graduates that's ready to go out and take the next step. Because the money just, you know, just starts with us, it does not stop with us. But they got to have that platform where they can go into the next phase of our lives. And I believe very, very strongly in our mission, state, for college career and life. So whatever the next step in their educational process and in life, our goal is to have students prepared to take that next step. Because again, even with the five-year cohort, like Dr. Lee's mentioned, you know, that one student, it may not be important to some, but it's certainly important to him and his family. So that's something they'll remember for the rest of their lives, and they had an opportunity to participate in a graduation ceremony. And when they take those pictures, who knows if it went into out-of-state? You know that. You know, so, you know, so that, you know, but all our students are special, and I just appreciate the opportunity to work with them. And work with the dedicated staff here at Coffey County School System. If you have any questions, please give us a call. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Smith? Much celebration for Wiregrass?
We've been celebrating for sure. Well, first, I'd just like to say that we're completely excited about our grad rate increasing so much. I have a dedicated faculty and staff, and it takes everybody. And I echo what Dr. Cummins said, it really is a county-wide effort. It takes everybody pulling together to get our students across that stage in May. So we're so excited about that. As you know, when you look at our grad rate, we kind of got off a little rocky, but when you look last year, you know, when we had the fifty-six point eight six, we were on the comprehensive support improvement list. We've been doing that this past year and worked very, very hard to turn this around and be a turnaround school. And that's where we're at now with the eighty-two, which is also the state average. So looking at that, we had a twenty-five point gain from eighteen to nineteen. And our five-year rate, I think, is sixty-two point seven five, so we were up a little bit there, but up tremendously with our four-year graduation rate. The combination of the two is the seventy-five point six. So to say we've celebrated is an understatement, and we are off the list with the state, so that's a lot to be proud of. Our students, when you look at the flags, we are small, so you'll see that a lot of them don't count. But for all students, we're in the green, which means that we met our target. And with our white students, we are in the green. We have too few everywhere else to count, economically disadvantaged, we're showing improvement, but we did not meet the target there. But we will continue to work as to the target of ninety percent. So we'll continue to grow there and show improvement in all areas. But we are, again, very, very excited about our graduation rate, and we just hope to see more, much more improvement, because it helps every student. We're an individualized and comprehensive program, and that's attributed to where we're at.
Well, thank you. Once again, wow, I mean, to go to the over eighty percent graduation rate, I know y'all put in a lot of hard work. And I want to commend you two also on your, your baccalaureate service that you have each, each graduation season. Her staff, Pam, her staff put on a really nice baccalaureate service out at, which is Covenant, is the site, and it's well done, and it's beautiful. And, but to go to eighty percent, where you're at, you're at eighty-two percent graduation rate. And now, just so that everybody kind of has a picture of where you've come from. Wiregrass Revenant College and Career Academy now is six years, is this your?
This is year seven.
Year seven. And you have been on the technical college campus for?
It's our fourth year on the technical.
Four years.
We have a hundred and nine students are duly enrolled.
A hundred and nine are duly enrolled. Your total enrollment this year is?
Right now, that we're around two oh three.
So two hundred and three students.
So we'll have.
I like to call it a technical college high school, because we have a true technical college high school in Coffey County. If a young person wants something different in high school, and not necessarily just in Coffey County. You're a regional, that's why we named it Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy, because you have students that come in from Atkinson. I know you have some from there, and then you have some from Jeff Davis, you've had students from there. So you are a regional high school.
And when we say we have a hundred and nine duly enrolled students, that Wiregrass, we also have around ten at South Florida State College, which is better there for the time. We're growing every day, over half of our students are duly enrolled, and we like to say this was just a suckage. We just continue to go up and have the best possibilities for our students.
Dude, I mean, now that we're in our seventh year going, and this is, we're fully committed to this as part of our charter. Are you seeing that a good bit of this is that families are starting to see that, that this is gonna help my child get through high school? That this is, this is not a, I hate to use the word dumping ground, this isn't an alternative-type setting. It is, it is a way to stay engaged, it is a way to earn a high school degree and be, you know, go into the workforce if you so choose. So I, you know, I'm just excited to see that it's, we knew it would gain traction, and we appreciate your leadership out there.
Well, thank you. And what we're seeing now, too, is we're seeing families that their second child is now a part of our academy, or their third child. So we're seeing siblings coming through as, as we're growing.
And you picked up a number of students from the homeschool who've transitioned over from homeschool to come back to our school system. And even some who have been in private school who've come back, or never been in, but now are in our school system, so.
Been brought to this week.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yes. Any questions?
You know, when we started this thing, of course, our target audience has changed a little bit from deception. But, you know, I was like, look, if we can get thirty percent of these kids graduate, we'll have done some. And the first year it came in at fifty-one percent, I thought, shoot, that's better than I thought. You know, I don't think I ever thought we would be sitting here six or seven years down the line with an eighty-two percent graduation rate. So that is phenomenal, that is, you know, that is something to be proud of, and it's, you know, this thing's been a success from coming to get here. Well, I'm extremely excited about all the good that's been here.
So I'm very happy to be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, we can celebrate. And we do want to make sure we thank all of our, all of our staff, all of our teachers, everybody. This is our condition, destination graduation, transportation, the maintenance, our SROs, to all of our office staff, to everybody. It takes everybody, it's a community, our business partners. I think our goal, we talked about before, is to get over ninety percent graduation rate. I think we're gonna be there, so thank y'all. Alright.
Go back real quick, the out-of-state travel band trip was only one twenty-nine, leaving on one twenty-nine, not one nineteen?
Yeah, we can't say too many.
Alright, so, which rate, audience participation? Do we have any audience participation? Thank you. Executive session, I do have a need for an executive session to talk about personnel. And I wanted to talk about personnel with the Board. And also to consult maybe with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation. So for settlement claims or administrative proceedings. So just wanted to ask the Board for an executive session.
Do we have a motion to enter executive session?
I was gonna say, I was like, you seconded, it's fine, I move, we exit to executive session, that's what I'm saying.